Here, thanks very much.
Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I'm here.
Ms. Darnak-Kofax.
Still here.
Ms. Kiskemara.
I'm here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Maren.
Here.
Ms. Oish.
Hello.
Ms. Karaski.
Hi, I'm here.
Ms. Saismar Heiser.
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Tolan.
I'm here, thank you.
All right. So this board voted unanimously last year to direct the Governance Committee to begin drafting an anti-racism and an anti-bias policy and to adjust the controversial issues policy to better align with the objectives of One Fairfax. Additionally, when the board was deciding what policy work to prioritize during a return-to-school planning, this was one of the few issues that received widespread support for continued focus, excuse me. During the Governance Committee's initial conversation with staff about possible policy development timelines, it became clear that the scope of stakeholder engagement necessary to produce sound, well-informed policies needed further discussion by the full board. Since then, Dr. Presidio has indicated stakeholder engagement will be financed with existing departmental funds. To help frame today's conversation, which is slated to last for only one hour, I want to encourage my board colleagues to confine their questions specifically to the scope and reach of stakeholder engagement. Today, we have an opportunity to provide feedback on this critical policy development component so that staff can get to work with the Governance Committee. Of course, eventual draft policies will be brought to the full board for final consideration. Today, each board member will receive the customary three minutes to share their comments and ask questions. Depending on how much time is used during this initial round, we may have time for go-backs, although I'm thinking we probably won't. We will now begin with a brief presentation from staff. Ms. Williams?
Yep. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here today to provide an update of the work that has happened to support the development of the anti-racism, anti-bias policy that will inform curriculum development across the school division. I want to take just a moment, though, and connect it with the conversation that we had prior to the break. I think it's really important for us to appreciate this work as the foundation of the continuing negotiations of issues that will be related to the fallout of the different impacts of the COVID pandemic. Specifically, what we know is that environments where racism is normalized or where bias is preferred unmitigated, uninterrupted, are exclusionary. They create additional psychosocial conditions under which children need to navigate teaching and learning, and certainly, they hamper outcomes for students and make the environment just less hospitable to all. So this is really a part of the longer-term negotiations around how we recover as we think about all of the ways in which we will have to stand up supports for students across the school system. So what's important for us to also know as we hear this presentation is that the work has been aligned with the portrait of a graduate outcomes document that One Fairfax laid the foundation for community commitments that will be espoused within the domains of this presentation that we want to follow through on the commitment that is being demonstrated by school divisions all over the country to really take head-on these issues of inclusion, anti-racism, and bias-free environments. And again, this is a huge part of laying that work, laying the foundations for that work. And then finally, anti-bias and anti-racism education means that we have to increase in understanding of identity, educate our students about the diversity of our communities, ensure that we are aware as well, help them to discern between just and unjust conditions, and empower students to be change-makers in their own environment and in the larger global context. And so with that as the backdrop for this discussion, I'm now going to invite Ms. Eddy to take us forward.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Ms. Eddy?
Good afternoon, everyone. To support anti-racism and anti-bias education, the School Board identified two critical policy actions that Mr. Frisch recognized earlier: the potential revision of the existing controversial issues policy and the development of new policy commissioning anti-bias and anti-racism education. And the new policy might include direction to develop topical lessons that would ensure that all students have age-appropriate learning opportunities in their K-12 journey. So during this work session, we're going to provide an overview of our plans for engaging stakeholders throughout the FCPS community with a focus on ensuring diverse representation of perspectives so that people are heard and understood and that we develop a sense of shared values around this work. And we'll share how we envision engaging FCPS staff as well as an external consultant to support this work. So this work session is a follow-up to a forum discussion dating back to about a year ago where consensus was achieved to expand anti-bias education into the core curriculum. And as Mr. Frisch mentioned, the board unanimously decided to pursue the policy development in September. So over the last few months, we're pleased to have been able to communicate with the Governance Committee to establish a timeline, roles, and plans for stakeholder engagement, and we're here to share the status of those plans. So to understand the context of policy work and inform our plans for stakeholder engagement, we have done research in regional and national work in anti-racism and anti-bias education. And I also want to share that we have had an opportunity, Dr. Deborah March and I have been invited to participate at the state level on the VideoE's Advisory Committee on culturally relevant and inclusive education practices so that we can be involved in this work at the state level as well. Really excited about that opportunity. So we are eager to advance this policy work focused on curriculum and instruction, and we want to share that in our survey of related policies, we've really found that anti-racism and anti-bias curriculum work tends to be embedded in broader equity or racial education policies. And there's a summary of that review here of 25 equity or anti-racist policies by UConn where they found that typically this work is addressed through the lens of school environment, incident reporting, staffing, data analysis, funding, and broader racial inequity policies. And some of the examples that we've kind of been benchmarking our work against where curriculum and instruction work is included in those equity policies include the school divisions that are listed here, our neighbor Montgomery County, Almarle County, Piedmont Unified. All three of these school divisions and more embed their work in curriculum and instruction in their larger policies. So Montgomery has a non-discrimination equity and cultural proficiency policy that directs staff to develop curriculum that celebrates diversity, that confronts and eliminates stereotypes. That was actually created in 2017, and it's currently under review in a public engagement process with public comment and opportunities for students to really have a voice in policy development as well. Almarle County's anti-racism policy, which was approved in 2019, that was really a student-led effort in developing policy. And it explicitly names curriculum materials to be examined for racial bias and that an anti-racist curriculum would be developed for students at every grade level. Students really played a key role in that and were learning from Almarle and their process. And Piedmont Unified's racial equity policy was approved this fall in 2020. And that policy actually commissions anti-racism education curriculum for K-12 students, their families, teachers, and administrative staff. So we've had the privilege of being able to talk with colleagues in Almarle County and also in Montgomery County who have been very generous in sharing their engagement processes where broad public engagement is included. Particular stakeholder voices or stakeholder groups' voices are raised and students' voices are raised in the process. So we're pleased to share a little bit about our intentions, and Alicia will be taking it from here. I should add, forgive me for the poor introduction, Alicia Hunter is the new coordinator for Social Studies, K-12, and Fairfax. My role is now focused on coordination of curriculum integration and management at the secondary level. And Alicia's been a wonderful collaborator in this work all the while.
Thank you for that warm introduction, Colleen. Whoops, sorry. I just wanted to share more about our plans for the timeline and the stakeholder engagement process. So we've had the opportunity to better understand our regional and national examples of this policy work to inform our plans for stakeholder engagement. So we're now going to provide an overview of our timeline and share our thinking for the stakeholder engagement process. In undertaking policy development for anti-bias and anti-racism education, we are going to build on the foundation of One Fairfax. We want and need to have our community voices at the forefront of this work. We have formed an FCPS team to lead this process of policy development, and we believe that having an external organization collaborate with us on stakeholder engagement will maximize transparency, objectivity, and trust in the process. So you're now looking at our timeline that we planned from November 2020 to June 21. And we have the aim of having policy in place by the end of the school year, and we are moving along on our timeline towards the stakeholder engagement process. There's two areas where we have some ongoing work throughout our timeline, and those two areas are, of course, our collaboration with Dr. Williams in the Chief Equity Office to design and refine the stakeholder engagement process. Additionally, we are ongoingly consulting with local experts to build on their successes and lessons learned and engaging relevant internal and external stakeholder groups with consideration to being intentional and inviting groups that are traditionally marginalized in the community and in our schools and Fairfax. So as we wrap the month of January, we've solidified our commitment to working with an external consultant on community engagement. We've narrowed the scope of our request of a potential external organization to facilitate, document, and analyze stakeholder input. And Dr. Williams will share more about that shortly. And as we continue into the month of February and as we consider our phase from February to April, we're going to begin our community engagement. So our next steps are to connect with stakeholder groups and invite community input. We will also start to work with our external organization to start the facilitation and documentation and the analysis of the stakeholder input. And we hope to conclude community engagement by April and return to the board with policy recommendations in May or June. So now I'm going to invite Leona to share more about the stakeholder engagement process.
Thank you, Alicia, for setting the stage, and good afternoon to the board. We're excited to continue this conversation. So as we think about stakeholder engagement, we know that this will be an iterative process. It will involve many layers of ensuring that the lived experiences of our stakeholders are included. And so we're thinking about this from four perspectives. How do we inform the community? So our communication plan to ensure that we get this out to our community about the different opportunities for engagement? How will we involve everyone in opportunities to provide feedback virtually? And then we will collaborate with a variety of stakeholders that we'll go over shortly that is a list of stakeholders we've begun to capture knowing that there are additional ones we will reach out to through our partnership with Fairfax Government. These stakeholders will come together in these collaborative sessions. We hope to hold several of them with different themes and different objectives in mind. First, we want to establish the themes that are on the minds of our families and our community and our community partners around how we might inform our policy drafts. And then we will go back to them once we have drafts for additional feedback. And then finally, in this process, we want to empower our community and our stakeholders in this process. In particular, as you heard Ms. Eddy share, some of our learning from our partnering jurisdictions and nationally around this work is the power of student voice. And we know that every day when we talk about anti-bias curriculum or creating cultures of inclusivity, really, we're caught about to think about our students. How do they feel when they're in our buildings? Because at the end of the day, that's who our charge is for. And so we are excited to include our Student Equity Ambassador leaders, our SEALs, as a consistent member and voice in all parts of the process, as well as our Equity Leads, which are teachers and staff at every single FCPS school to provide that school-based perspective when we are working not only on themes of establishing our draft, writing the draft, community engagement, all components. It's important that those voices never leave the table as we make decisions because those are the people we make decisions for. So we're excited about including them. Next slide. And so to do this work, we definitely, we talked about this from two different perspectives. We've created an internal stakeholder group that will help design the process of all those folks that were just mentioned previously. And so we know that we have wonderful assets within FCPS that we can lean and leverage of a cross-collaborative team. And so this is a slide mentioning the different participants of this team, people from within the Chief Equity Office, people which include myself and other folks on the call today, as well as people from across our different departments, our region office, including our principals, associations, including our communications team, our division council, as well as continuing our work with Fairfax County Government and their Chief Equity Office, especially if they've laid the groundwork with their Equity Task Force as well as the One Fairfax. This group will come together, and the primary role of this group is in design process, including communicating with the board, helping to establish stakeholder groups, ensuring there is diverse representation, particularly around groups that we don't typically get to engage in this process. This group will help develop those policy drafts, and this group will continue to come and report to the board. So this will be the work of the internal group. I'd like to now turn it over to Dr. Williams to talk a little bit more about the role of the external group in this process. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Leona. So let's talk a little bit about why I work with a partner. I think it's really important to amplify a couple of things. You know, when having these conversations, there is what you said and what I heard. And the what I heard piece is so highly influenced upon my insider role in a culture, right? And we know that in doing this work, sometimes we need to hear things that are hard. And so working with an external partner who doesn't have that background with which to filter what our stakeholder groups may say is one of the real opportunities that comes along with this type of partnership. In addition, there's familiarity and a prior working relationship with this group in terms of developing our organizational capacity. We can also look at the opportunity in partnering in this way through even the discussion about where the organization sits with its attention to return to schools. Right now, we know we need to have those robust programs in place. We know we need to understand the ways in which communities have experienced harm. We know we need to create data that helps us to make those informed decisions. And so that we have partners that we can rely on to help us to get that quality feedback around the ways in which anti-bias is experienced by the communities, by the ways in which racism is normalized in the environment, that's a real opportunity for us in this moment that will serve the organization well. So when we think about the possibilities in this partnership, I really want to have us centering those kinds of things as you consider what's been shared. Additionally, we will use existing departmental funds to cover our costs. And so in that way, it feels like a win-win situation that we have positioned ourselves in to effectively move this work forward. It's important that there is recognition that the partnership between the external provider and the internal stakeholders is designed to maximize the level of transparency and, quite frankly, translateability of the policy to inform curriculum development across the organization, which is really important if the policy is to be more than just words on a page. So with that, I will now turn the presentation back over to Alicia to kind of help us to think about all of the stakeholder groups with which we will be collaborating. But here is a list before you for your consideration. We've identified stakeholders who are key partners in our day-to-day work and certainly in the formation of this work. And so, Alicia, if there are any other things that you would want to amplify about this listing for the consideration of board members, I invite you to offer that input.
Yes, Dr. Williams, thank you. So in our plan of identifying stakeholder groups, we were very intentional. So just thinking about our community groups, we had a chance to connect with Carla Bruce, Chief Equity Officer with Fairfax Government, to connect with us and share more about the process they use with community engagement for the work of One Fairfax. She was able to give us some insight. And also, they have some additional community groups that may not be listed that we're also going to consider and reach out to and identify as partners for community input. So they're not all listed because we're still working with that group to get access to that information. So I did want to add that piece. Also, I just wanted to give some context behind our student groups. And so we've had a chance to look at our database from student activities of groups that are registered across all of our high schools of different student organizations. And so that's where we were able to identify student groups that could be a part of this work. In total, we have about 59 key stakeholder groups. But of course, we welcome board input to ensure that we have representatives who desire to have a voice in this work. And again, particularly those whose identities and cultures are most impacted by bias, racism, and hate. And so, you know, as we consider this process, we do plan to invite a representative from each stakeholder group to offer feedback. And in addition to engaging key stakeholder groups, we will offer opportunities for public comment at various points in the process to welcome additional community input. And so those were the last pieces I wanted to add to stakeholder groups. So if there's nothing else, we'll just transition now to the close of our presentation and offer an opportunity for board members to share comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. We will go ahead and begin the board engagement portion of today's meeting with Ms. Maren.
Hi there, good afternoon. I'll get my video going in just a second. This is so exciting to see the fruition of this work. It's great to see that outside consultants are coming on per community input. I just have a question about what should we do as board members if we are contacted by people who want to be involved? Who should we refer them to?
Hi, Ms. Maren. I don't know if anyone else is going to jump in. I think we decided for right now it will be the point of contact as we continue to define the roles of the different members of the internal group, including our communication team. And so as the Director of not only Equity, but our Engagement, our Family Engagement, our Community Engagement, I welcome our community to reach out to me if they would like to be engaged as well. So this is Leona Smith Vance, and I'm happy to serve in that role as we continue to parse out the roles of our internal group.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Anderson?
Turning on my camera and my mic there. Thank you so much for all this work. I know we're all excited because culmination of many board member forum topics as well as the work that we've wanted to see for a long time. I have about three questions, I believe. Dr. Williams, you talked about the cost being taken care of internally, but I don't know if I missed how much you said this would be to involve the consultant to complete this work.
Dr., I could offer a few introductory comments, and then Dr. Williams could add on. But you know, since Dr. Williams has only been with us for a brief period of time, the Instructional Services Department team has been working on this. And we do have funds that we've identified as part of our equity work that we believe that we can use to cover the costs. The costs are not finalized yet. What we're looking at doing is working with the Leadership Academy, which is a group that we've been working with who's providing professional development services for our division and school-based leaders around equity leadership. And we have an existing contract with them that we're intending to add on an addendum to that contract to do this work. It would not require us to be over the $50,000 threshold. It would be beneath that limit, so we'd be able to do an addendum to the contract. But the precise cost is still a negotiation. It would be not really prudent for me to disclose yet because we don't have that completely worked out through negotiation, but under $50,000.
Thank you for that. My second question is, are we allowed to provide suggestions for community groups for consideration?
I would invite recommendations. One of the things that I have been particularly sensitive to through these types of processes is that we make sure that we are inviting to the table those people who often are not at the table, right? Who best to tell us how bias and institutional racism plays out in the organization and/or is experienced if not for those populations? So we welcome your thoughts and direction around including groups that may not be on our list, who absolutely should be.
Thank you so much. I know at the top of this presentation, you spoke a little bit to the work that took place. I think it's slide five or six. I didn't count them. You talked a little bit about what happened in Montgomery County and Albemarle County and Piedmont Unified to talk about how they develop their policies. Can you speak a little bit more, if you know what their public engagement piece was, their community engagement component, what that entailed?
So let me invite Colleen to jump back on for that question.
Sure. Almarle had a unique opportunity to have a student group undertake project-based learning as a key part of the policy development. So students really brought in the stakeholders to inform the work. They were kind of like the hub of the work. And they brought in different groups as subject matter experts to support their recommendations. And they now have steering committees to guide the work, so including a student steering committee and also a staff steering committee. And then Montgomery County Public Schools, they developed their policy from existing policy that kind of drew together existing and sometimes disparate policies and undertook public engagement to kind of bring them under one banner. And in that process, they solicited stakeholder voices through public comment, but also kind of collaborative engagement. And we look forward to having more conversations with Montgomery County about their existing process of revising that policy. I think their public engagement period starts this week for revising their existing policy. And again, there's opportunity for public comment followed by more vigorous engagement of stakeholder groups.
Ms. Eddy, may I add one thing to that? If possible, with Albemarle, one of the things they did in supporting the students is they actually also use an external facilitator. They partnered with the university to be that facilitator for the students. And that work was so powerful that they now have a protocol that is provided to the board and other groups for all decision-making around policy to be considered. So there's been a lot of great work as a result of that. I just want to add that nugget in as well.
You wouldn't happen to have access to that protocol, would you, Ms. Smith?
We asked them to send us a copy. We were really excited to hear that, and we want to see it as well. So we're happy to share.
Thank you. And I think somebody else wanted to share something else.
It's just me. And what I want to offer up is something that, you know, just my perspective from outside of the organization, having done this work in other places, I think what is really powerful that sometimes when you're in an environment, you don't necessarily see that I really need to lift up about this process. Very often, when we're doing this work, the policy is essentially written. And then we send it out and say, give me your feedback. And we send it to stakeholder groups to get feedback, but essentially, it is already formed. We're actually doing this the right way, which is having the people that we serve give us a sense of what needs to go into the policy. And then we use that to actually do the rest of the crafting. So it really is honoring the perspectives of the folks we're supposed to serve as opposed to coming up with a policy and saying, now give us your feedback.
Right. Definitely, there's something to be said for being at the ground level rather than reacting but contributing to this. What is the timetable for this work?
So I heard Alicia give us a little bit of a projection around when we intend to be finished. Alicia, would you like to come back on and share more around that?
Miss Sadey, I apologize.
No worries.
So actually, I want to maybe ask Colleen, do you maybe want to speak to the timeline?
Sure. I think we're, we're really aiming to try to complete this process this school year. That being said, we're just starting our collaboration. We will be starting collaboration with external organizations. So this is tentative, but we really want to try to bring this to fruition this school year.
I think that is for me. Thank you so much for all of your work on this. I'm very excited to see how this comes together. So thank you, Mr. Frisch.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Up next, we have Ms. Tolan.
Yes, just one quick question. Thank you so much for doing all this work. I'm really excited to hear about the, the great outcomes that Alba Maral had working with their students in PPL. So my question was, and I'm very excited about the SEALs groups that you've set up across the county. If we have students that are interested in being involved, should they try to engage through the representatives, the SEALs in their particular schools? Or is there another place that we should be sending students?
If I, if I may, that's a great question, Ms. Tolan. Absolutely, we want them engaging with their equity leaders within their building. So whether that's the adult equity leads or the student ambassadors. Also, if they are a part of any of the organizations that were listed, you know, there's a lot of student organizations that were listed that we would like also to collaborate, but those would be two great places to start. And if they are not getting any success there, I welcome them to contact me as well. I've had many kids reach out to me when they heard about the SEALs and, you know, how do they get involved at their school level? And many of them have worked with the SEALs to create robust student equity teams in addition to the adult teams. So those are avenues for students. But I'm excited for our student voice as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to see that long list of student groups. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Up next, we have Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Thank you. I'm going to see if I can get my camera to work. Thank you. Hopefully, it'll stay steady. So yeah, I appreciate this great work, and I very much, as Ms. Tolan said, appreciate reaching out to all these community groups and student groups. Is now a time to recommend additional groups? Was that something I should send maybe in an email to you all? I'm happy to do that, but I've got a couple of thoughts of additional groups on that work. And so I'll just send that email. Yeah, so I would recommend when you're looking at best buddies in terms of student engagement, not every school has a best buddies formal program, but they had their own version of that program, sometimes for cost reasons and other reasons. So I would recommend a best buddy to a best buddies. For example, Lake Riddick has a Bruin Buddies program. So just be mindful of that, as well as maybe some Unified Special Olympics members as well. And then I would look for disability self-advocates. I don't see that on your list. So the Autistic Self Advocacy Network, the Ark of Northern Virginia, I think would be good community groups, the parents of autistic children to have a different. So I can send you that list, but I think making sure that we include ableism in that list that we're looking at when we're looking at anti-bias is the other piece I'd like to put out there. And then the other question I had is, I'd like to dig a little more into this external consultant. I know Dr. Presidio said it's less than $50,000. I understand that. But again, given what I see as our extreme needs around developing remediation and recovery services and even, I would say, trauma-informed services and PD and curriculum materials that may go alongside that. I'm wondering, you know, with Dr. Williams, you very much impressed me in all of our conversations, and you're new on board. What do we see getting from an external consultant that I guess our great equity team? And you can't, it seems like a quick leap to go to an external consultant, I guess. How do we get to that leap when we have such great staff on board?
Well, I'm gonna have the staff talk about the lead because I can't talk about, you know, all of the history that brought us here. But, but again, let me just offer why I think it's important for us to work with a third party in this, in this context. And it has been, and I pushed the team, as we were talking about this, to think about what our role is and what their role is. I think that, you know, sometimes these conversations are hard. Sometimes the things that get said are things that we might want to defend because internally, we're, we're doing these things, right? And what an external person won't have a filter around doing is saying, oh, you've got this AAP program here, or, oh, you've got this social emotional support there. They will hear what is being said about how an experience is happening, how a program is perceived without that filter. And so what that will allow us to then do is actually take a more critical look at the disconnect between our intentions and our impact, and then make sure that shows up in operationally how we design policy. I mean, the translation from theory to practice around the application of the lens of anti-racism, anti-bias, that is the hardest chasm to close. And part of that is how people get hurt. So we really think that this third person, third party will help us with that how people get hurt aspect that sometimes compromises the work. The process to get us here, I want to invite staff to give more background.
Yeah, I would just say, Dr. Williams, I think very much what you already stated is kind of how we got here. You know, making sure that we do get full voice and participation in this engagement process is important. And, you know, I think the other part that we factored in is how comfortable people would even feel in some of, you know, these groups that have been marginalized. You know, would they even feel comfortable coming to us and sharing information in some situations and some instances? So we felt like, you know, to make sure that we're doing this work well in a way that we can really get authentic feedback from our stakeholders in a way that situates this policy development to be successful because it will be, you know, as Colleen said, the umbrella policy that we look at our other work through in terms of professional development, curriculum development. We think that it's worth the investment to get that additional outside support.
Appreciate those statements, Dr. Presidio and Dr. Williams. And with all due respect, I would just like to add that, Dr. Williams, I think one of the reasons the board was so excited to have you on board is because you are from the outside and you are new to our system. And you don't have the, you know, the way you were talking about sort of some of that sort of defensiveness about what we've already been doing or how we've been doing it. So I still personally, look, in an ideal world, I would, I would not even question this, but we're desperately needing IAs to support our schools. This could fund two IAs. I mean, I just, I have, I just feel like, Dr. Williams, let's try to have you do this work, maybe. And I would obviously tell you work to do before we go to this step because this money and this time could be used for so many things.
So can, if I could offer a thought, just some background that you might not have about where we are in the work. I mean, certainly as a new person, standing up the work of the CEO is, is a big task. And one of the things, in addition to all of the ways that my input has been sought out to include the conversation around return to schools, to include thinking about how we mitigate harm, how we collect, collect data, we are also charged with the team to stand up an equity action plan for the entirety of the system. This piece of the work is not, the policy development piece is no small task. So the question is, how do we get it all done, right? And how do we get it all done urgently? Because that's one of the things I've noted here, right? We're talking about things that we want to respond to urgently because we know we're in a moment where urgency is needed. But what is also needed, what is also important, is that long view. And so we're trying to balance this tension of how do we create these structures that will support the organization in the long term, which I see this work as fundamentally a part of while responding to all of these urgent pieces. So I hear you when you say, you know, money is really tight and we need to be thinking about how we spend every dollar. I think that this vendor who has agreed to work with us is actually giving us a really reasonable set of constraints within which to work because they understand our fiscal realities. So this feels like a compromise that takes into consideration all of these competing things with which we're contending right now. So I hope that finds some resonance.
I appreciate that, and I do very much support this work. And I do hear, I very, very much, I just find, just coming straight off the other conversation we had, it's, I always feel like we shouldn't go to external consultants first, right? And so, you know, and having worked with your team, and I just think we have such great talent in-house. I'm just wondering, and I was gonna put, and really, really good talent. So I'm just gonna put that out there, but I'm excited about the work, and I'll email you some other.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore Heiser. Up next, we have Ms. Keys Damara.
Thank you. Just trying to get my camera on. Okay, just to piggyback on that conversation, I, I do support the use of an outside consultant. Having listened to and had lots of conversations around these types of topics, whether it be anti-racism or bias, oftentimes, you know, you need that safe place. And that, I believe, that the objective third party can provide that. Even though you, Ms. Williams, are new to our organization, you also are somebody's boss. And so that, that relationship and those relationships can impact how we hear and how honest we're willing to be. And I don't think that we can afford to not really hear, the time is now, to really hear what our stakeholders are saying. And so I fully support that proposal. My, my questions, I've got just a few. And I'm glad you mentioned, Ms. Williams, your equity plan. I am assuming that this work would then help to feed in or to provide basis for that equity plan.
Yes. So the whole idea of what comes out of this work will be our definition for what it looks like to develop, to develop curriculum. My apologies, that is emblematic of anti-racism and anti-bias. What does that look like when you do it on purpose? The policy should lay out with that level of specificity, so we're not talking abstractly what it means to be anti-racist in mathematics and social studies. But we have policy that delineates how that curriculum should be constructed.
And I'm also hoping that with that work, we're not only looking forward, but it's providing some sort of a basis or test for us to look at our current policies and practices.
Certainly. So what is implicit in the process is that part of the work. And what I mean by that is part of the standing up of the Equity Action Plan is to look at those data to understand what the patterns are. So there is this nice alignment between the work that I am standing up as I assume this new role and this work that is moving forward. Because certainly, I'll be using much of the past patterns, right? Because we know we've had interruption in the, our ability to fully collect data this year. So my ask has been, so let's look at the datas from years past. Because typically, what happens with gaps is they've been in the data for years. They might be widening, they might be narrowing. But when we look at this pattern, irrespective of the assessment system, irrespective of the curriculum, we see the same kinds of patterns. And so certainly, there will be that piece of information juxtaposed with this work that's going forward to help us be conversant about why we're doing what we're doing organizationally.
And just to respond to that, I know we like to use the term gap, and I got that. But I see it oftentimes as an opportunity. You know, where's, where's the access to opportunity? And how can we improve that? I'm hoping that this work will help to inform where we need to bolster access to opportunity.
So if I could really quickly, I would offer that what the data tell us, the gaps in the data, they tell us about system insufficiencies. They tell us about where the curriculum isn't as robust as it needs to be to meet the needs or the practices and procedures are not responsive enough. So they are the flashlight that should start our inquiry into our daily practices. If that speaks to this larger, I know we got to do something with that achievement gap language. It is very much antiquated. And so I hear you when you lift that up as a concern.
I do. I think it conveys a stigma, and I think that unfortunately, that shapes attitudes that hurts kids. My last question has to do with how the board might be a part of this process. And maybe you can expound on that.
So actually, let me invite in Alicia or members of the existing team that have organized the stakeholder feedback. I have some thoughts about it, but I'm not sure if it isn't expressly a part of the planning that's been undertaken. So if you all would share any thoughts around that question first, and then I'll offer thoughts.
Go ahead, Colleen. I think we were all waiting for the other person to talk. Go ahead, Colleen.
I mean, I think, I think we would be open to the board sharing how you'd like to deliberately be part of the process. And I mean, the idea is to report back to the board, of course, on the recommendations for policy development and to seek your input. But, but certainly, we'd love to, you know, be intentional about that in the process. So I suppose that's not the best answer in ill-formed engagement beyond reporting to the board what the stakeholders share. So I'd invite others to share as well.
And what I was going to add was, one, one of the things I found important and useful is when we had board representation on our return to school task force. And so if there was a way in which we could engage a board member either within our community groups to be part of those conversations and/or even part of our planning group, we welcome that. We know that oftentimes, our community comes to you first as, as that safe place that you mentioned, to share, to share their lived experience. Perhaps they've not felt that they have a safe place to do that within the division. So we know that you hear those stories sometimes before we do. And so we would welcome you as either parting the planning or the engagement, knowing that you have a different lens into the needs of the community and things that they share.
So thank you all for those pieces of feedback. And I would offer that I would hope that we could engage at different checkpoints in the process. This is what stakeholders are saying. These are some of the larger messages that are coming forth. This is how we're thinking about responding through policy. So there is some feedback that is happening before the policy is actually in a form where we're then asking you to read and consider it. So it would be my hope that, and in this process, we establish checkpoints when different things are completed, where we can actually report out as to what's being said. Because the other piece of this that we can't lose, in many respects, this feels like the hardest work for people. The most challenging work will be actually implementing it. So we need to talk about things that come up, our desire to codify those things and what they will mean in terms of the actual functioning of the system, to include how we engage with the public, to include the kinds of things you might hear as a result of this happening in a school or across the division. And so that communication throughout the process, I think, will be important so that it is not just an activity that forms a policy, but it ultimately becomes a document that is really informing the function of the organization through the lens of anti-racism and anti-bias.
And I appreciate that. I would like to see the board modeling as, you know, having, let it be sort of ground zero, right? Where even the way we look at policy at the board level is being siphoned through some of the guidance that you are providing for our organization.
And I mean, again, I know we don't have much time, so I will try to be.
I'm just speaking for myself.
I will try to brief in my response. But, but what is really important for me to just offer from my experience is that when this kind of work is siloed, it minimizes its impact. So your point about what does this have to do with everything else is a huge part of this work. And certainly, as a board who has responsibility for policy, our being able to think about collectively what else, when we change this, what else needs to change is a part of the ongoing work. So thank you for lifting that up because that is, that is a huge implication of choosing to do work in this way.
But even if we could have guidance, right? We're, we're all, we all come from different perspectives. And, and how might we incorporate bettering ourselves in this area through the guidance that you might help be able to provide to FCPUs? And that's, that's my last comment.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys Damara. Up next, we have oddly enough, our three Governance Committee members right in a row. So we'll start with Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. As you know, I fully support this. This is something that was, was an issue that I raised a couple of years ago and was very happy to support it again last year. But that leads me to my comment. I am very concerned, and I would love to have a commitment, and I think we have it, which is that this is not a one and done on community engagement and public engagement on these critical issues. Because what we're talking about is a strategic imperative that should cut across our decision-making. It should be the, one of the lenses in which we view every decision, be it a policy decision or an operational decision. And so how do you see this work being an iterative process rather than just a one and done? Especially for the public engagement piece.
Yeah. So, so thank you for that question. And I don't want to entangle this conversation, but it feels like that's probably the best way to proceed in responding. Work that is going on concurrent with this work is the development of the Equity Action Plan. And part of that work that is underway is to ultimately create an equity task force. Now, I know the word "task force" is completely overused, but for the purposes of just giving. but for the purposes of just giving a vision of how we can organize in such a way that number one, we make feedback from the public a continuous feature and not every now and again, part of how we do our equity work. The task force would function in that way. Again, thinking about the composition of that task force is going to be really important, because we need people who are most subject to these systems of oppression to be given us feedback about how we're doing in terms of responsiveness. And that task force also has to have some power. And it is not just a, you know, we show you this information, tell you how great things are, but where's the evidence that would suggest that we're making strides? Where's the evidence that suggests we need to do more work? That is the vision that in many respects is is populating my imagination about how these pieces all come together, the Equity Action Plan, a task force of interdisciplinary stakeholder groups, external and internal, that we have some accountability for reporting both progress, using the evidence that's present so that this is not a, we set with you one time to get your feedback, and now we're done. But this is the transformed way that we ensure that we are putting equity at the center of our decisions and quite frankly, our accountability.
So Dr. Williams, you hit it right on the head. It's, there's a feeling in the community that we come out, we ask for their input, we give them a pat on the head, and then we go back. And so we have to transform that way of doing business. But the other piece of it is that you don't like the term task force. Task force are temporary in nature. Teams are not. We have teams that go on forever. So I would urge you to call this more your Equity Action Plan Team. And that rather than a Equity Action Plan, it is the Equity Strategy to inform Fairfax County's decision making.
Thank you for that feedback. There are some things I do well. There are some things I'm not so great at. Names and those kinds of things, I solicit all the help I can get. And so I appreciate.
Is that I don't want people to think this is a one and done. This is so important, and we we need to embed this in how we approach all of our work, including our community engagement.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Up next, we have Ms. Amesh.
Okay, thank you. Where do I even begin? First of all, thank you guys for all your hard work on this. I mean, I think, you know, to senior staff and to my colleagues, I just want to point out, going along lines of what Ms. Maro was saying, this is the level of deliberate and thoughtful engagement we actually should be doing on every decision we make. And I understand there are bandwidth challenges and there's ways to think about that. But I would appreciate if we even learn from this protocol here and and thinking of how we can transpose it into other areas. When I, I mean, when I think about being intentional about equity and really meaning it, not just saying it, this is what makes the difference between leadership and just kind of compliance based work. But anyway, okay, so Dr. or sorry, Dr. Williams, you know, I I'm a little bit concerned about groups that may not be represented. And and I don't just mean in this list, right? We can all, board members, think of the group that we might think of and add it to the list. But it takes a certain amount of civic and political development to even have a presence, to be a group and to, you know, be something on someone's radar. Can you just speak to how we're taking that into consideration?
So that's a that's a really important concern that you're lifting up. And trust me, it has been a part of the conversation that I've been having with the team as I am doing listening and learning events with different folks. I recognize that the the people who can readily come to the table are those who have some level of power, because they do have some level of organization. And so my push has been, we got to go to those places where people are are disempowered. And certainly, working with Carla Bruce has helped me to get connections in the larger community. And quite frankly, the the Equity Team is so phenomenal in their work with students that I know that we're going to ultimately be able to pull together students who are in the alternative status, students who have had the system, not the, you know, students who are struggling academically. We've got to have spaces for those students as well as the ones who can tell us very lucidly like what the equity issues are in their building, because they are interested interested in social justice. So I appreciate your larger push around, how do we get to the folks who are disempowered, who will not be on a stakeholder group? And I think that we've got to push ourselves around going to those places, going to those spaces, working with people that we don't necessarily conventionally think about when we go to do this work in order for that to happen, because the unfortunate part is the infrastructure for what you're asking to happen doesn't exist, which is what perpetuates the marginalization. So we have to create it in order to actually bring those people to the table in ways that we honor what they tell us.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that. I mean, when I think of, and this is the case across the board to your point, first is thinking, all right, what are all the dimensions of identity that may be impacted, right? And then it's like, all right, who's within our system that we may be missing? Because even on this list, I I mean, I could think of a couple, but I would, I don't want to be limited by my own mind, too. Lord knows I'm missing a bunch of things, too, you know? So so that's another question. All right, who's in our system? Who's in our world? And what are we teaching our kids about that? And then who did we miss? And where are the intersections of all that, right? So I think the intentionality required, I, you know, is is deep, and and I appreciate your outlining that. And would ask perhaps for you considered, as you're working on it, thinking about how that protocol can be applied elsewhere, you know? And and even to Ms. Maro's point, to our work. I mean, it should kind of be like a framework that's the standard thing that we apply to any decision, you know, that we're making.
Absolutely. And it goes
Yeah.
Back to why it matters that this isn't one and done. Because the the reality of it is, the the perfect can't be the enemy of doing the work. And we are going to miss things, right? We're going to miss group because we just are. But if our process is iterative, if the idea is that we're working to get better over time with accountability, we'll bring people to the table who should be there, because in many respects, what happens is the data starts to tell us we need to have certain people at the table. Does that, so hopefully that makes some sense.
No, absolutely. And then being mindful of what's not captured in the data, too, you know, that's, it's just so deep. Cool. I I also wanted to, given that that's the case and the complexity involved, I'm wondering what thought y'all are giving to moving away from actually picking things to identity or like teacher led instruction versus like student led exploration? Because if we empower students to whatever identity they come to the table, right? We're come, we're accounting for the more than 200 languages of wherever people come from in this county, you know? So I don't know if you have given that thought, but in developing a policy like this, thinking of just flipping it?
Yeah. So if I speak to where where my thoughts are about our students and the opportunity in this work, it is immensely rewarding to me, like just in like what is possible. I think we have the opportunity to make sure that this is guided in large part by our students. There's no reason that it shouldn't be, right? Or that it wouldn't be, because when we ask our students, they tell us. Now, what I would also say that is really important, and I I share with leadership my perspective on this. We've got to have accountable systems of accountability such that when students tell us things about their experiences, how do we hold the organization into account for actually doing something with what they share? Children, students tell us all the times what works for them, what doesn't. You know, the teachers who are inviting and the ones that aren't, right? But often, those data are just things, those are good things to hear, but there's not that accountability. And we've got to get creative about what that looks like. And to your your point about, you know, there are things that numbers don't tell us, which is why we have to have systems that respect qualitative data in the same way that we exalt numbers. Because without that, it's going to be really easy to marginalize perspectives that are essential to interrupt some of these systems that have been in place for forever. So hopefully, again, that speaks to, it speaks to where I am in my thinking as we do this work. But I would invite any other thoughts, if if you have some, around how we make sure that the most marginalized, and quite frankly, the people that we're supposed to serve, were actually serving.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And and I'd love to, I know y'all were saying you want a board member to work with you. I'm right, I'm I'm ready to do that. But in all seriousness, and I know I've spoken with Mrs. Eddy and Dr. March and others before about this, too. But the last question I have is what we're doing to meet families where they're at, whether that be language, poverty, ability, access, technology, you know, these kinds of things. If you can speak to that with our outreach strategy, what steps we're going to take. Thank you.
Yeah. And so Leona, I'd like to invite you to talk about the work of the family engagement specialist. But I've got all kinds of ideas about that group of highly talented folks. But Leona, would you mind starting?
Sure. Sure, absolutely. So if you look back to what we said about the internal group, that is the purpose of that group is to talk through exactly what you just said, making sure we reduce barriers for access to engagement. Just like we have barriers for access to everyday school, there are barriers. And so we will be working with our language services department, working with our family engagement team. We have representation, so we have family engagement reps who work with every single region. And actually, they are often our conduits to our nonprofit organizations. They're the ones that have the stories on the ground. We have wonderful parent liaisons, and we also have other positions within family and school partnerships that will support that. Of course, we all are challenged of COVID right now, like how do we have this in virtual settings? We know even, you know, Ms. Amesh, you come to our T-PAC meetings, right? And and in some ways, they are more attended now that they're virtual, and in some ways, there's more barriers. And so that is going to be part of that group's purpose is to think through the design process to reduce barriers to being involved in this. So having different ways to add your voice in. Our family engagement team, when they were working on the family engagement policy last year, did a variety of different things. So they went two groups, but then there were also open sessions. Sometimes you have to go to people, and sometimes you have to have it open to everyone. So those are some of the things we're thinking through, as well as technology access, as well as language barriers. That's a huge concern in general, which actually should be a big part of this work is all the different barriers we put up, including language needs within our division.
My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amesh. Up next, Ms. McLaughlin.
Great, thank you. Building on what my colleagues have said, there's no doubt of our commitment and and desire to do this well. But I'm concerned as a governance committee member, we specifically asked to bring to the full board the scope and the cost of this work. And before I ask some questions, I just want to make the board aware that Ms. Bukarski and I, as representatives to the SCIP, we were made aware that the county chairman, Jeff McKay, already had an equity task force that he engaged in this work this past fall. Carla Bruce, Jesse Ellis oversaw that work. And so when I think about how we be effective and efficient with our efforts, one, I think we need to get as much information on how did they do that work to inform ours. Number two, I do appreciate what Ms. Sizemore Heiser said about $50,000. I absolutely want to invest effectively and efficiently our funds. But $50,000 funds a for a teacher, a first year teacher for us. And we have a lot of positions that we need. There is so much talent. Ms. Leona Smith just said it specifically. We have these family engagement specialists, reps for every region. There is so much that we already fund at central office that I would like to understand who the vendor is, why the slides don't say anything about the $50,000, and what's the scope of work that we're going to pay the vendor for? Because frankly, county government can use their highly talented people to do this engagement work. We should be doing that as well. And finally, I absolutely think we we benefit from at least maximizing our community engagement time and energy by bringing draft policies from school divisions around the country who've already done this great work. What do their policies look like? The board should be seeing that, and we should then say, yes, let's bring this out to our stakeholders. So we maximize getting their input about their lived experience in the system and then also what they think about these policies, so they're not talking in a vacuum. So I, Dr. Williams, I I know you come with immense expertise, but I do think that there's a lack of information as a board that we're going to need before I I could support saying, let's just spend $50,000 on a vendor. So I know I rattled off a lot of facts questions.
Yeah. Well, certainly, once long you want to start, and then I'll I'll add some thoughts based on what we'll share.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Just just a few things that I would say. Remember that the $50,000 is the RFP mark. We're we're not committing $50,000 to do this work. It will be under that, but we're in contractual negotiations to get the best price to do the work. So so we haven't solidified that yet. The funds will come from existing money that has been budgeted to support the development of curriculum work within the Instructional Services Department and our equity development work. And we do have some cost savings as a result of COVID in that work this year because of some activities that we haven't been able to conduct, because teachers are focused on other return to school efforts. So we do have a little bit of money available for this. We do think we can make it work. And if that money not spent on this, it would be repurposed, not for staffing positions, because these are logistical dollars. It would be repurposed other for other logistical supports within this fiscal year. So hopefully that helps a little bit. Obviously, once we get the final price, we'll certainly, you know, make that available to the board. The scope of, you know, the vendor, Dr. Williams and others can speak to that more a little bit. But there is an awful lot of work that's involved with standing up these meetings, scheduling these meetings, facilitating the group dialogue, synthesizing the information in a way that is actionable and accessible to the team and to the board. And and you're 100% right. We want to be efficient. We want to be looking at other division policies. And the team has been doing that. They've been doing a lot of research on existing policies in other parts of the country. There were three divisions that we referenced here about, you know, close contacts we've had with those three divisions, Montgomery County, Albemarle, and Piedmont Unified. But those are just three. We're looking at others as well. So we are trying to be efficient with that work, and certainly we can, you know, share those additional drafts and policies from other divisions if the board would like to look at some of those as well.
Dr. Williams?
See, I just want to first catch you while I have my time on what you just said. First of all, you know, I don't, I I've asked the superintendent, stop giving us PowerPoints. We need information like these policies you've all identified. They're just cited there. It should have been an appendix at a minimum. Secondly, I didn't hear an answer to, why does the county government do exactly the work you described for this vendor? And they do it with their existing employees? And you, we, I didn't hear from Ms. Smith, but we already have people who do this type of engagement work. I just don't hear an understanding why we have to pay for a vendor to do the work that we have staff able to do it. The county government did it this way, and we've got to be spending our dollars. There's a lot.
Ms. McLaughlin, do you want, the answer to that question was answered previously, but I will go ahead and let Dr. Williams answer it again.
Well, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Frisch. My answer
You said you didn't hear.
No, I said, I said, Dr. Persidy was explaining why. He didn't answer my question, which is, how come we have to pay to get this work done, but the county government uses their own staff to get this very work done? I didn't hear a response to that when Ms. Leona Smith says she's got family engagement specialists in all the regions. I would like to know why we have to go outside to pay people to do this.
And and as I said, Dr. Williams addressed the question of why this is a preferable path in her answer previously. So I will let them answer your question, and then we'll move on to Ms. Darnett Kofax.
And and so I I hear the question, and certainly I I'd invite the team to to share in this. But I I need to offer up something. There's going to be a less than satisfactory response to your question. But this is one issue among many that will come down to this decisions around choices as it relates to equity and access. And I think that, you know, a lot of what we do to move equity forward feels like it's in contradiction to things that we could, we could just do another way. And what I would submit is I can't speak to the process that the county used and who, what vendors they use, et cetera, et cetera. But I do know that if we have equity professionals who worked across the country, who do this professionally, who have helped other organizations develop a policy process, what we know is that they have the cultural competency. What we know is that they have the experience and the track record where we don't have to ask, you know, have you had this training? What is your understanding of bias? What is your understanding of awareness? Which in many respects, as an organization, we are still building the foundation to ensure capacity across the group. So the the idea that we have people who could go out and do this work is absolutely true. The the question of have we trained all of those people to the level of cultural competency where we would look at the information and know that they applied that lens uniformly, I'm new to the organization, that is a part of my unpacking process. So I think that what we actually do outside of all of the other things that I just outlined is we get is we get people who we know have competency in that framing to to gather the information and give us recommendations so that we don't don't end up with something that actually doesn't speak to in the long term what the organization needs to do. That might be Ms. McLaughlin very hard um and quite frankly, require those kinds of conversations that are really soul-searching because they have deep import. And I think that that is what, working with this organization or any other organization that has this background, that's what it affords us that using staff internally may or may not provide. But again, Leona, if you want to add something additional.
Well, that, first of all, very eloquently said. Thank you for that other understanding of like the the need to invest in this. I I do, I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin's point that we have really great people on staff who are always willing to share their content expertise and engage. And one of the things I'm still connecting back to is this idea of trust and and also time. Um, um, a lot of our family and school partnership staff, just as a reminder to the board, are hourly staff. Um, our family engagement reference reps are the only ones that actually are not, but the the bulk of our parent liaisons are hourly. So when we think about um ensuring the the amount of time and intentionality to really listen, we have this moment of time to really listen. Um, I do hope that we, you know, leverage whatever we can to really pause and listen in unbiased ways that we ourselves can get in our own head because we have a perspective of how things are going. Um, I I have been in FCPS for a long time and I love FCPS and I'm sure I have my own biases around what I think we do well because I live and breathe this work every day. So that's just another consideration. But I do think we have great people who will also support this work. We will still leverage them. And I do believe that um we could clarify the scope of the team. I think that was a question you had, Ms. McLaughlin. It was on one of the slides. So um designing the process and identifying stakeholders and all that, that's our work to do. We're the ones with the relationships. We're the ones that understand FCPS. We're looking for this external group to help us with that data collection and providing that safe third-party um perspective of analyzing and facilitating the groups. So that, so we have minimized their role, the the rest of the world, the rest of the work. We will leverage all the great, oh, sorry, all of the great people of FCPS.
Uh, before we move on to Ms. Uh, Darnett Kofax, uh, Dr. Williams, suffice to say, y'all have no problem with checking in with the county to to learn whatever insights they might be able to share.
Of course.
Mr. Frisch, could we just make sure that the board's provided with the actual RFP once it's completed and the dates of when it's going to be issued?
Uh, Dr. Persidio, is that a problem?
Might I jump in here, please?
Sure.
And um because of the cost of this particular proposal, it does not require us to go through an RFP process. Since it is under $50,000, um, we did uh vet this vendor against, I think it was three other vendors, and they came out with the best price as well as um met the the goals of the proposal um that we had set. So it does not go through RFP, but we could share with you the proposal from the Leadership Academy.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Um, thank you. I I want to thank you all for a update on this very important work. Um, I I do appreciate it. Um, I'll I'll just follow this line of questioning about the vendor. I want to say upfront that for the reasons you stated, um, and Ms. Williams, I believe that um an outside vendor is important. Um, I I see this process, it's a whole, it's a wholly different topic, of course, but I see the process very similar to A Portrait of a Graduate when we discussed that. We had an outside vendor, we worked there, we're over. I will caution you on the size, the stakeholder group is beautiful and big, but uh we had over 75 or 80 participants in Portrait of a Graduate. I was the school board rep on there. It it's a tough group to manage. Obviously, I think that's an additional reason to have the outside expertise on something like that. I think it's important. So um, yeah, it's, uh, but I would appreciate as soon as you can get um us us information on um the 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 Leadership Academy group that um you have um looked at. I think that will ease some of the fears. But um, so the one thing I also I wanted to ask, when you talked to Carla Bruce um from the county, um, you know, obviously she was a member of SCIT and SCIT also, you know, um, it they were established basically um to see, to look at the county and see our deficiencies. And and they were based first on basically childcare issues and early learning issues. But of course, they branched out and we got the one Fairfax policy from them. So I I and just because you're new, I just want to share this newer, not it's completely, but but have you talked to um Ms. Bruce about that and how that all worked in the beginning and how we branched out from one mission to a greater mission?
So uh Ms. Bruce is very generous. She is my um campaign. We check in weekly. Um, and I've attended a SCIT, did I say it right? I've attended one.
Okay.
So I am getting all of that background, yes.
Okay, good, because I do think there's definitely, and I saw the stakeholder group, there are obviously overlaps in between SCIT, but I think that would be maybe checking in with Ms. Bruce to see if there's any missed stakeholders from the SCIT committee that should be a part of this to help inform this. Because I think that's really, that'll be really important. And because that's established and the and part of their mission um it became what we're looking for a a small part, you know, by by establishing the social and racial equity policy um that we developed. I think the process was similar. So um if 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 not wholly wholly the same topic, you know, I realize that. So I think that's a great reference point. And then I do, I have, I have questions and I don't know if, I know we talked about this in an earlier presentation, but the student equity um advocates that that the leaders, I I have questions about how they're chosen, how they're being trained and how many per school. Because I think that's going to be a great point in all of this.
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Darnett Kofax, I'm happy to and and I'm happy to share as a follow-up, um, a one-page summary of the group. So every, every high school has two of them. We allowed the high schools to choose and they engage in four sessions with um our Equity um Central Office team to build their capacity. But I have to tell you, I would love for any of you to meet them. They are just amazing. This is our future. They are on fire. And so they have been so engaging that we have now begun to offer monthly office hours for them and they just want a space to come and talk to us. And they have so many wonderful ideas at the site level as well at the division level, which is why we thought this was a perfect group to to lean in on their leadership and their advocacy and empower them, especially after we heard the stories of Almora County and how um their work resulted in UVA creating an action, a youth action team, even at UVA, how powerful their work was. But we are happy to follow up with additional one-pager of um students and and so that you can get to know them too.
And and Ms. Smith, I know um Montgomery County um had an excellent program too that was kind of student-led. So I saw them on your list and in if you engaged in them as well, because their program's been long established. I'm not if it's exactly the same as we're looking at it.
And Ms. Darnett Kofax, that was your time. So we'll get this answer and then we'll see if anybody else.
Thank you. Yes, we have engaged with Montgomery County. We've just begun those conversations. One of, one of our secret weapons is even Ms. Hunter, who's on the team. Ms. Alicia Hunter was one of the Equity and Culture Responsibility Specialists on my team. And then she was recently promoted to the coordinator. She actually worked in Montgomery County and did a lot of this work there. So we have connections. And you're right, there's great work in our neighbors that we are leaning and learning from so that we don't, um, so that we all are are resourceful with our time as well. So thank you for mentioning that.
I thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Would anybody else who has not yet spoken like a go at this? All right, uh, I will take my turn then. Um, thank you, everyone, Dr. Williams and everyone else for for sharing with us today and for your work on this. And um speaking from the Governance Committee, we look forward to continuing to partner on this and getting it done um so that we can let it do the work that we're hoping it will. Um, just to to put a finer point on it, when we talk about the need for an outside consultant, um, I think one of the things that that we're getting at here is it's not like previous school boards didn't have a commitment to to equity, right? That that we didn't talk about the need for equity. Um, and yet it's something that we come back to again and again. And part of the idea behind an outside consultant, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Williams and and team, um, is letting someone else ask the question. Because we are, you know, enmeshed in all of the inner workings of this school system. And baggage comes along with that, how we think about certain programs, you know, whether we think about it consciously or not, right? Um, and someone from the outside will think differently about asking the questions. They will hear the answers significantly differently than somebody from the inside. That's what we're getting at when we talk about the need for an outside set of ears and eyes on this, right?
So the only thing I have to say that to that is what you just said. That's that, that's exactly the point that that I'm trying to lift up. Um, and and, oh, by the way, what about when what needs to be said is I experience racist behavior and slurs every day? I mean, what if, when the things that need to be said are really hard, not just in the abstract? And that's what we sort of need to understand. There's no way for us to write a policy that is about anti-racism and anti-bias, which has many manifestations, right? That that's the longer than the time we have without our having some sense of what that looks like in the organization. And so to have that unfiltered conversation where those things can be solicited uh solicited, we can be really clear in the development of policy of operationally, this is what we need, what we mean, because we can connect it with the feedback that was heard consistently across different groups. So that was a very good summation.
Well, and you know, I I've met with lots of uh GSAs across the FCPS. And one thing that I hear routinely is from students who say, look, I hear words said, I've, I get, I feel this way when a teacher doesn't stand up for me, et cetera. And I say, well, did you talk to your principal about it? And they say, no. So that tells you that there is something in the way sometimes from having the frank conversations that are going to result in change, right? And I think everybody on this board knows that that conversation is happening uh around race and other issues too. Because, you know, we've seen the comments on social media from students uh over the last two years. Um, so.
And what you just said, right, that that was a a a a easy pitch in many regards. Because sometimes what students will say is this has been happening and people knew it was happening and it was allowed to happen. And so it, to make sure that that gets in the report, if that is the thing that is said, the outside person, similar to me who is still learning, I can't connect those comments to anybody and say, oh, such and such is a good person. They're well-intended. They don't have all of those things to explain away what might be said in those forums.
Right. Well, and I I'll just underscore again that I appreciate all the work that's going into this. Um, you you've arrived at the perfect moment, Dr. Williams. So uh we look forward to diving in on this with you and and with Ms. Eddie and um with uh, you know, the rest of um uh Leona and the rest of the team as well um in the months ahead. Um, with that said, if nobody else who has not yet spoken would like to speak, we can go ahead and adjourn for the day, just about 13 minutes overtime, which is not too bad for us. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Have a good afternoon and all.
Great job, Dr. Williams. Great job, Leona Colleen.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Great job.